Whether it's casual family dining, something more intimate, or a new destination for your favorite Merlot or Chardonnay, The Wine Journal in Adrian, Missouri will exceed all your expectations. Look for us on Facebook for all the delicious details.
Alderman Vic here.
Alderman Humble here.
Alderman Bridges.
Here.
Alderman Sears.
Here.
Sample pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a motion for approval of agenda?
Remember we approved the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
What we did here was a five. So, for personal appearances, we have a few. Do you have that letter from the library? Sorry. I am sure you did, I just did not get that added, so I apologize for that. We have a resigning member of the library board, and then there is a recommendation to appoint somebody in the place. And so, she's going to wrap that letter.
No, is that in our packet, wasn't it?
No, I think I failed to get it in there. That's for the park board.
Oh, park board.
Was there somebody from the library that was going to address? I'm confused about where it's at in the agenda.
I think initially she was going to come.
Since it's not actually a personal appearance, I would table it to later in the agenda on your new business, so we can go ahead and progress with the meeting. Well, we gotta wait for our minutes, girl. What happens if you try to do it? Time to get it done. I withdraw my motion.
So, I stand corrected. So, basically, we have somebody that is... Diane Gregg is resigning, and they want to recommend Christie Bunch to fill her expired term.
Is that a motion, Agent?
Yes.
Make a motion that we accept Diane Gregg's resignation and that we appoint Christie Bunch to complete the term of Mrs. Gregg's. We have to first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Assuming Christie is on board.
We have two individuals sign in to address the board. The first one is Sandra Gillis. I wonder if you'd love to come up to the podium?
Yes, I want to talk about the house on 104 North Street. They want to condemn it, and the only thing that is wrong with it is the roof and the side of the building next to the garage. All those studs inside, the two by fours, they weren't touched. And I want to know if I can have 30 days to put the roof on and that wall down. That is all that is wrong with the house.
So, gentlemen, what she's referring to is the actual 104 North Houston. We had an independent building inspector come out and inspect it. He went through it, took pictures of the building, and his final determination, he did recommend demolition. The building commissioner agreed with that assessment and ordered it to be demolished. That went into effect September 22nd, I believe, and started a 30-day window. If Ms. Gillis chooses not to comply with that, we will have a hearing at the end of that 30 days, which then is... We would be more prepared to listen to those recommendations at that time. We were unaware that she would be here tonight, and so we're not prepared with the reports for everybody. So, at the next meeting...
Okay, because when I talked to the inspector, he was giving me time to fix it. He did not say demolish it.
Actually, in his report, it does... His recommendation is to demolish it based on other criteria. For example, there was two or three foot of standing water in the basement that leaks too mold, that should become prevalent through the house.
And it's out.
I understand. But the fact that it was exposed to the elements for almost two years...
So, what's our decision right here?
Well, it'll be two years in January.
Right, because we cleaned it up. It was January when it caught fire. Ice now everywhere, but we cleaned it up anyway.
Sorry, sir. What is our course of action right here?
So, right now, this is just a kind of a public comment.
Okay.
And so, it's not on the agenda. And so, again, she's still within that 30-day period. The course of action the city has taken is to recommend demolition. And so, there are no other options at this point in time. At the end of that 30-day period, she can come back before the board and the building commissioner and make the case. But based on the determination of the building inspector...
So, basically, she had 30 days to gather her evidence to appeal it, and then we'll look at the appeal on the next month.
That is correct, yes.
But also, in the Mid-America Exchanger, it said, "We'll be terminated on October 10th." That was in the exchanger. This is October 10th. This was the meeting.
Okay, well, it's less than 30 days from the time that we had the discussion. So, what we're basically saying is we're willing to extend that 30 days to the next meeting, which gives you an additional 30 days.
And you are Matt Cunningham?
I'm Jeremy Bridges. Yes, ma'am. And did we provide her with the report from...
Yes.
Like I said, would she change the inspector when I talked to her?
Yeah, that email was sent to us on September 14th, guys. It was the complete report.
And then by the time that we were able to put it together, make the recommendation, September 22nd is this. We sent the certified letter to her. Would she receive the certified letter as well as being personally served by one of our officers?
So, what I think I would be willing to do is make a motion to extend the 30 days to the next regular board meeting. In other words, giving her until it's the next board meeting to make her appeal.
And we'll have our inspector here in presence.
Okay, can I go ahead and tear the roof off and that back wall?
No, but ma'am, you can absolutely tear the roof off and the back wall. You can do that, because that would be part of the demolition process. My recommendation would be not to do any new construction to it.
No, I believe the walls because they're not mine.
Fair enough. Yes, you may absolutely tear the roof off and tear whatever other demolition you'd like to do.
As long as it's carried out, you know, carried off properly, that it's not sitting in the yard and making more of a mess.
That's correct.
Yeah, and technically, you can't be inside the house. So, if you're working on it, that's one thing, but it's condemned structure because it's unsafe. So, just keep that in mind when you're working on it.
But has it condemned? The floors are just fine, the walls are just fine, it's the ceiling.
Ma'am, I'm going to disagree with you on the walls. Those walls are not structurally secure.
The one next to the garage is not secure. The others are... I put the sliding glass door in and it's... I can shake on it, and it is not moving.
Well, Jeremy, I'm going to defer to him. I mean, Jeremy's the fire chief, so...
Yeah, but I'm not...
Well, I was told fire chiefs have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, I'm not an engineer, but the person that wrote this report is the one that we hired to look at that home, and they're saying that the structure is unsafe to be inside of. According to this report, so...
Okay, so I can get Gary Disney to come look at it?
No, no, no. So, at the next meeting, you will need to have an inspector and an engineering report that shows that it is safe or that it can be repaired in order to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gillis.
And the next meeting?
It will be the 13th of November, unless that falls on a holiday. And we will probably have that meeting at 6:30, so that we don't extend, push the normal scheduled board meeting, if that is acceptable. So, it's 6:30 on the 13th.
November 13th.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next person that signed in was Daniel Warner. I'm sure he'd like to come to the podium.
The other day, at the chamber meeting, I brought up that we're going to do a fundraiser, a Wine Walk fundraiser for our new Christmas lights on the buildings on Main Street. And Ryan asked me about coming to the meeting and telling. We raised $2,950 from the Wine Walk itself, and then I had another $120 in donations for our Christmas lights, for a total of $3,070.
And so, he and I had the conversation. Basically, they want to put new lights all the way down Main Street for the Christmas season. The ones that he wants to do are actually...
They're permanent.
They're permanent.
Yeah, so they'll be up all year long.
Different holidays.
And has your lights up all the time?
So, these are LED lights. I have done eight buildings right now, and they're LED, and you can change them to whatever color you want. So, right now, I have them pink for breast cancer awareness.
Is everybody on board with this?
So, everyone that I've talked to is. Last year, like, I put Christmas lights up on all the buildings, and everyone was fine with that. So, like, my goal this year was just to raise money to replace the lights that needed to be replaced. And then I didn't do the east side of Main Street last year because the bank and the library was all under construction. But my thought was, like, anybody that wants these permanent lights, I'll put them on there, and then if they don't, then I'll do, like, the regular Christmas lights like that we already had done before.
And I thought this was a good opportunity to fall under the community betterment. Yes, absolutely.
Daniel showed them to me earlier tonight. They're pretty slick.
Yeah, how much more money do you need to complete the project?
Honestly, I don't know. When I figured out the first time to do the west side of the street, both sides was going to be about $4,200 for that side. And I have part of it done now, and I haven't talked to the bank or the library to see if they want to. At the funeral home, they want the lights on their building.
Do we want to go to two grand, pitch in, in the betterment?
Well, it sounds like he already has almost four. So, I don't like... And you still haven't talked to the bank yet?
I talked to her about it, but she didn't say...
Well, I'm just thinking we probably don't need to do that much, is what I'm thinking. I just, I'm trying to understand the math. You're saying four grand for the whole project, and you already have...
That was for the one end.
For the one side?
It was 42 for the east side.
And he doesn't have them all done?
Okay.
So, you're thinking 42 for the other side?
So, you're probably...
Oh, to finish it? Okay, to finish it.
No, that's what it would cost to do that end total.
But you already have some done, correct?
That I've already paid for, yeah.
Yes.
Did you have a goal for your... I mean, for... Did you have a goal to meet or anything like that?
No, I was just... Because I've... Like, the Christmas lights before, like, I've just paid for them myself. So, I thought, well, this year I'll do a fundraiser to raise money. So, I'm not... I mean, it was my fundraiser, because I could say... I didn't have to say what it was for. I could just raise money for whatever.
Well, most of it was...
But I thought, I'm going to...
Do you think two grand will get it all done for you?
It would, yeah. I think so.
One side, not the other side?
All of it or just one side?
The way I hear it, if two grand would get you done one side, you need a whole another $4,200 to do the other side, correct?
Well, but there's not as many buildings on the other end of the street, so it wouldn't cost as much. I haven't figured out what it would cost to do that side yet.
Yeah.
We'll make you happy walking out of here, Dave.
Probably.
Sound like you just figured for how much you made.
Well, if you come up with a number, they're going to give you some money. But you got to come up with a number.
All I was going to say is I don't feel like we need to bear the entire rest of the expense. There's other members of the community that can help and things like that, but I, personally, I'm definitely willing to contribute.
Sure.
From the city's community betterment fund, so... And maybe even personally, so... Because I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
So, Daniel, were you going to ask the businesses and say, "Hey, will you guys pitch in?" What are you thinking, buddy?
I always just wanted to do it, like, just because I wanted to do it. Like, I've never asked anybody for money. And this year, I just thought, "I'll do this to help." And then Ryan brought up to me that you guys might... So, I'm not asking for anything.
$2,000 would get you along the way.
$2,000 would go a long way. And it would not be too much.
There you go.
You could find something to do with it.
Well, you know, Adrian has a pretty remarkable parade. Very few communities do it for Christmas. But one of the things that we're going to talk about here in just a few months is a mayor's Christmas tree as well. And so, I thought it was a great opportunity to bring people, especially for the holiday season, into Adrian. And so, if I can make a recommendation, if you would actually sort of find out how much it would be to do the whole project, and then find out who else would like to contribute, and then bring those numbers back. That way, we can have a more solid number to recommend. Because I think that everybody, just kind of reading the room, is supportive. Just to have the hard numbers, what do we need to get the whole project?
Okay, yeah. Can you do that?
Can we make a motion to give you, like, a limit?
A threshold?
And then just let Ryan deal with it? That's cool. That way, we don't have to tie up more time.
Up to a certain level?
Could absolutely do that.
How much is in the fund, or we talked about?
About $25,000.
$25,000.
And we spent some for fireworks, right?
Well, we don't have a number back on the fireworks, but they told me that was probably going to be around $3,000 or $4,000. So, there's... Like, make a motion that we do maximum $2,500 for Main Street? Are we talking Christmas tree fund, all that? Or this one, or... This would just be that. Okay, $2,500 over max on the Main Street lighting project. I don't know what you want to label it as.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, you and I will work together, so...
Okay. I'm excited for the next meeting.
Absolutely.
You guys need to work.
I guess somebody works for me.
So, sir, that's all for personal appearances.
All right, department reports.
We did not receive one from emergency management. We did receive one from fire. It's in your updated board packet. I don't know if any of the areas, but the antenna that was in the corner right here has been removed. The tall tower wasn't being utilized. We were using little antennas on the... They were attached to it. So, we attached those to the building so that we still have the radio here at City Hall. But the tower was removed, which just goes into the landscaping and just improving the aesthetics of the building. Fire chief, he is at a... I think it was a life flight training tonight is where they are.
They do a tremendous job.
Do you know what's wrong with engine two? Just curious.
Yeah, he told me... I think it's within the transmission, something that's shifting, if I remember correctly. It's not at a huge expense in... When you look at the scope of, you know, what it would be to replace. But we still have another one that's in service. So, we don't have diminished capacity.
So, that was my question, kind of like where you're going. Is this a Band-Aid, or is this going to solve your problem? And we're going to be okay?
I believe it's going to solve the problem.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Question for the fire. Police report.
Chief Dillon did submit a report as well.
All right, Ryan?
So, I submitted my report. Our investments continue to do well. We're consistently about the, almost the $24,000 market interest. If you look at the fourth page of my report, this was provided to me by our attorney, who had another obligation this evening. This report is the state approvals for marijuana microbusinesses.
Okay, that's... Because I saw that, and I was like, I might get this one.
That is correct. And so, there is one with an Adrian address that has been approved. Now, I have some questions about it. I went out and searched the entity's legal name with Missouri Secretary of State, and there is not an active organization with that name listed at the Missouri Secretary of State's business site. So, the attorneys are looking into it to see exactly what's going on with it. There's several companies named Missouri's finest, but most of them have an expired registration. So, we're doing more research.
Is it 7,000?
7,000 A Northwest.
So, it's seven miles west of town?
Yeah. It has an Adrian address, but not necessarily in the city. So, I don't know if they're planning to locate, you know, within the city to open the business, or... Right now, it's basically somebody's residence.
And how's a microbusiness, how's that different than a...
So, there were certain stipulations with opening a marijuana distribution facility. The state didn't want to just allow, you know, corporations to come in and dominate the market. So, there were three different ways that you apply. You could either grow it, be a distributor, or sell it retail. Is that right? Yes. And for a microbusiness, you had, if you were made under $30,000 a year in income, minority, there were different criteria that fell under that classification. So, basically, they could limit who the players were in the market. And so, there were, I think, 40 or 50 pages. Most of the applications were denied. This one happened to be approved. But we don't know anything about it. We don't know who owns that property here at that point. Well, we do.
It's really none of our business. It's in the county.
Yeah. I was... This was basically just an informational item. Again, they sent it to me because it had an Adrian address. So, we'll find out more information, and like I said, whether or not they want to open a storefront in Adrian or what phase of the operation they're actually looking to explore. As you probably have realized, water bills are delayed again. An issue with the post office. I've ordered the envelope folder and stuffer for our bills. This is what our bill will look like.
Will we have that in place by next month?
Hopefully, yes. They are actually programming the machine for us, for our water bill and the way it's laid out. And then it will ship to us, and then we'll be up and going. The great thing is that the machine will actually allow us to do two pages as well as an insert. So, for monthly communication with residents, it's going to be a good thing. Not having a local paper to get, you know, things out to everybody, to be able to send it to every household. It'll be a good thing for communication. Another item, we talked just a second ago with the Christmas lights on Main Street, a mayor's Christmas tree. I spoke with the bank, and they are willing to let us put a Christmas tree on the property that they own beside the post office to the east side. Now, it's just a matter of selecting a tree. I'd love to do a 30-foot tree. Unfortunately, a commercial 40-foot tree is about... A 30-foot tree is about $40,000. A 16-foot commercial tree is about $10,000. Or I can keep looking. This is a discussion item.
Tell us the details of the tree. Is it a permanent deal or what? I mean, tell us everything.
So, it's an artificial tree. It's commercial. Starts with the frame on the outside, and then you go around and fill the branches in. And so, again, it's purely... It's temporary just for the season. So, typically, barring somebody driving into it, it would last for countless seasons. LED? So, that's the structure itself. Then we would put whatever lights on it. So, the lights would be on top of that. Which the lights would be the least expense. I would suggest, not that it matters, if you did do something like that, I think we also should, if the bank doesn't care, go ahead and plant some type of evergreen there. And we can have that conversation. If that's how we want to proceed, I'll have that conversation. Use the temporary one for... The other one matures.
Be interesting to watch it grow every year.
Maybe do some too. I'd like to do it.
Terrible if it died.
Could you implement some type of, maybe, a fundraising project with it?
You couldn't?
For, like, baby families or something like that?
There's a lot of opportunity. And we can have many more discussions. I just thought with the conversation I had with Daniel, this will be a time to introduce the...
Put lives on houses that...
So, was there a day in mind that you had done when we would do some type of a community Christmas event?
Well, I thought the day of the parade to do kind of a lighting of Main Street, or we could even do it, you know, in conjunction with Thanksgiving, you know, kind of like the Plaza does. And there's a lot of different things that you could do. But I thought it would be... Definitely would be very cool to have a switch to flip with light, you know, all the way down Main Street.
Have you looked into live, like, live-cut trees?
I have not planted.
Like the Rockefeller?
Yeah, like, yeah. It's not quite that big.
I have not, but I definitely can.
I mean, I feel like we could get one hauled in from Minnesota for that.
I mean, it's something to look into.
And this is a one-time.
Well, but I... Yeah, but I'm thinking, if we're talking about paying $16,000 for a 16-foot tree...
Damn.
I feel like we could get a lot of real trees for many years to come for that price. And they would probably look better.
Because we're talking about 45 days. I see a lot of them in parks, like Longview, things like that. It's just a straight pole that goes up 50 feet, and then you just tie wires down?
Yeah.
And they put lights on it? And they put them everywhere. I mean, it's so bright when they light it up. It's, you know, every inch around, all the way around that thing. And I don't think that's going to be half the expensive as a tree that looks like a tree, but not a tree. Hey, those run about $1,000. Let's just remember. This is true. This is true.
I think it would be cool to find a new...
Not have a ghost tree.
To find a new live tree every year. You could go pick it. It could be a big ceremony. Dennis could follow you along with the newspaper. It could be a big story. Mayor Cunningham goes to pick the Christmas tree.
Bringing it back for charity.
You know, I could bring my guitar. We'll do the Christmas carol.
The Christmas...
The Christmas. Put out the car. I think so. I think it grows well on Christmas.
We're rolling out a bit there.
I don't know, maybe just planting a, a live one.
Well, we wanna plant a live one anyways, but we gotta have something in the meantime between the time.
Well, I mean, I wonder how much a, a twenty-foot tall live Christmas tree.
Oh, you're talking about big money there.
Home Depot has one listed for eighteen, sixteen, eighteen foot, but no price yet, out of stock.
You know, it gets very big going down the road, you want something, I mean, I want thirty, forty foot in the air.
I don't think you could, I don't think you could plant a sixteen-foot tree, I, I don't think it's beyond its ability to be moved.
Let's, let's let, let's let Brian dig in all that.
I will, I will bring some options.
Run with it, brother. Move it on. Move it on.
We don't have much time to.
Yes.
Bert's Pecan Delights is the definition of delicious. Along with every pecan dessert imaginable, including pecan pie milkshakes, you'll find club sandwiches, homemade biscuits and gravy, big cinnamon rolls, and much more. So whether you're wanting to satisfy your sweet tooth or needing an affordable family outing, you'll find it all at Bert's Pecan Delights, one fifteen South Old Seventy-One Highway, Adrian, Missouri. See more on Facebook.
Um, the next item that I wanted to share with you in my report, you have two proposals in front of you for the landscaping here in our southwest corner of the building. Like I said, we did remove the antenna. The first one is from Jim's, Jim's Landscaping, the second one was S and K. We did find that the, Mark informed me that the rock that we actually have out there now came off of the roof of Adrian Manor when they reworked it.
Big gravel?
Gravel, yeah.
So first question, are these identical projects?
So basically what I did is I kind of laid out the, the idea. Basically, we wanted something that looked nice, that improved the aesthetics of the building and showed that, you know, the people that drove by saw that we actually cared about what they'd given to us. We wanted to make it to where, you know, if people were walking by, there'd be some benches in it to where they could enjoy it. But we wanted low maintenance. And that was kind of just the groundwork. And so these are the different concepts that they came up with.
Did you give them a relative price range to go with?
Well, initially, I, I didn't, just kinda told them, you know, give us, give us some, some ideas of just what we can do with it. So that's kind of where this came from. Then after we got the first one, when the second person came out, I'm like, okay, well, this is kind of the scope. And so that's, that's what we're doing.
Who's Jim's Landscaping, where are they out of?
Here. Adrian, yeah, but these are both, I know. Yeah, these are local companies.
I know S and K, we're all, we've never heard of Jim's.
Jim does most of his business in Johnson County. Some in Leece, some.
They're both local though?
Yes. Yeah, he's, he's originally from, he's originally from Rich Hill, but he's been in Nathan now for fifteen, twenty years. If you guys know the Moises, he's related to the Moises.
I really like S and K, I think it, it looks great in growing season, but everything's perfect and tall up. That's what we're talking about, sixty days, eighty days on flowers like that. They get from, from the time early spring.
These are not flowers, these are perennials.
Yeah.
Bushes.
But the only thing you're really gonna have, there's the hedges after the growing season, after the. At least that one's got more, more of the rock wall and the rocks, more of the focus.
Again, these were just the initial concepts, if we want to scale back, we're gonna make changes.
So where would these funds come from?
Did I tell, actually, we have an investment account. When I started consolidating all the accounts, all the accounts, we had an account that the city would deposit sixteen thousand dollars in it and then pull nineteen thousand dollars out. Put sixteen in, two weeks later they pull nineteen out. Well, when I saw this pattern, I asked staff what was this for and nobody knew. It was just, that's what we did. So I went to the treasurer, went to Troy and said, Troy, can you tell us about this account? He goes, Ryan, I don't know anything about it. So then I went to the auditors and said, hey, why were they doing this? And so they said, let us research it. So they researched it and said, we have no idea why they were doing it. They were just doing it. Well, it got to be where they would deposit sixteen thousand and then they wouldn't withdraw the nineteen out. So when I had the account, discovered the account, it had seven hundred thousand dollars in it. So when we rolled it over, I labeled it as the investment account and so it's just been earning interest. And so it is literally a, it's a general fund account that has no dedicated purpose.
So it's not tied to any?
No, sir. There, there's no restricted funds in it, it's literally just.
We would still have to, we still have to, we would need to amend the budget to account for it somehow, right? You can't just sit there and account it for it.
So it's, it's showing as savings and so, I mean, it's, it's money that.
Capital investment.
So if, if you wanted to put it into the budget, you could amend the budget to, to put that money in. Right now it's just, it's, it's shown as investments.
Okay, so, so it's, I guess my concern budget-wise is if, if we're gonna spend that money, then it has to be put into the budget first.
That's correct, sir, yes, sir, absolutely, yes.
We can't just, yeah.
But you asked where the, the funds would come from, that is one of the sources of the funds that this could come from.
So could we, um, should we make a, should we make a, a, a city property renovation fund? And then move some of that money into it? Or should we wait till we have better figures on what things are gonna cost or a better idea? And then we can amend the budget later, or?
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend amending the budget until you're ready to move forward with whatever it is that you would like to do. But that's where those funds would come from, and like I said, they are, they're not designated funds.
Can you pay for this project out of capital improvements and then reimburse capital improvements with that money at a later time?
Yes, sir.
That would be the easiest.
Yes, sir.
All my questions answered. For now.
You do not have to make a decision on this tonight. An informational item, just to let you know where we're at in that process.
But you said Jim's is also a local guy here.
That is correct.
Okay. What's his last name?
It's escaped me.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I have his card on my desk.
No worries. I have his off.
Yeah, can we, well Matt, would Malie approve of these two drawings?
I think she'd think they are both a good improvement over what we have.
How close are we to her, can we have some tables and chairs and things like that?
I do like the, well, one has benches and the other has some places to sit down and relax. I think, yeah, those are, those are in both those.
Okay.
One you're looking at the trains go by and one you're in the midst of the park, so, you know.
The park?
Yeah, we'll call it the mayor's, we'll call it the mayor's park.
Put your tree right there.
Matthew H Cunningham Park.
Memorial.
Memorial?
Did I, did I say that out loud?
Wow.
Whoops. Just put an R I D cross out there.
Tough crowd.
I, I don't know a lot about, do you know anything about the, the, as far as the, the time of the year? If, if, I feel like if they're not able to do this soon, then they're not gonna be able to do it till spring. And I'm not even sure they can do it in the spring with some of the plants.
It, it, it just depends on what we would put in. So, like I said, you can do it now, there is a limited window before winter. We could do some of it, or most of it would probably wait till, you know, late or early spring.
And mine had to go on stages, you know, he.
It also depends whoever, you know, who you select and their schedule.
Well, that's something else too, is did you, have we talked to them at all about when they could start on these projects too? Cause that, that has to do with.
Good question.
I mean, if we, if we're agreeing to shell out twenty-five thousand dollars and then they tell us we'll get to you next summer, that's.
Most of, they both could get to it right away.
Okay.
The designs, you know, also are not set in stone. You like that fun?
Right, you can, cause I like the, I like the borders on the, the color picture one and I like to be able to sit in the middle of it on the other one.
Here's, here's what I'm not seeing in S and K that I do see in Jim's quote is the install weed fabric in landscape built with Colorado two and strip rock, not Dixie quote unquote. I don't see any weed fabric listed on his, which doesn't mean he can't do it, or they can't do it. But just the thought of it surprises me a little bit.
If I, if I had to make an assumption, I, I would just figure that this factor in. Cause they did talk about putting.
I hope so.
Yeah, let's, can we think about it?
Absolutely. Think about it, moving on.
You guys have some of your best versions, I'll send them on to Malie, just email those to her. Get her approval.
Yeah, we need that, just like the Plaza.
There you go.
One of those non-free ones.
Where the kids can throw soap in there.
Are you done?
Yes, sir, that, that was all, all of my report.
I would work.
You're up.
Hang on. Anybody got any questions for Mark on this report?
I had somebody in town tell me they liked the idea of the dog placed and where it was.
Wow, and somebody said they liked it?
Yep.
Cause I've had quite the opposite.
Well, they did not wanna live next to one and felt bad for somebody that would be living next to it.
We're gonna, we're gonna deal with that in the business. All right, if we don't have any questions for Mark, we're moving on.
Keep rolling.
Okay. Anybody got anything for Tom?
I guess Mike, you know, I'd like to hear from Tom, you know, in the midst of the drought, how we doing?
We're, like I say, we're pulling out the reservoir right now, doing very well there. Mark and myself went up and turned the river pump back on, so we're still feeding that. It is very severe in the lake, the drought. We can maybe pump back into it if we had to, uh, from the river. But we're kinda maintaining, we do agree we're maintaining it at the reservoir right now, so we're, we're all right. Gotta have some rain, like I said, we gotta have some rain. So, um, we moved from pulling out of the lake to the reservoir because the intake line has come up out of the water and one states here and we're pulling in really bad organics. And it's changing our chemical profile immensely, costing us, we'd probably increase ten percent chemical cost while we were short on water till we get it back up, so we decided to go back up there. And we said, yeah, we couldn't draw enough, we couldn't draw enough light.
Either, no volume.
Yeah, I couldn't draw enough light. So hopefully we'll just, we keep up. So that's about it on that. Couple of other things, like I say, we have a few repair replacement projects going on out there. Replacing some chlorine equipment and we're still waiting on J C I to get the scraper back around again, but they're still waiting on parts. But those projects are, are going on. Plans for the future, I've been doing little painting projects for the weekend people. So we're gonna paint the floors again, stuff like that, kind of tidy everything back up. I do have to say one thing though, with, and I should've been here in the past meetings, but I had other things going on. The new procedures with the, as far as the shut offs and stuff like that, the door hangers that Ryan and Amanda went out and put out, I know they put what, eighty-seven, keep it up? Better success than I thought it would be, or my shut off list was about ten people. Major changer, I didn't think it'd happen, but it did and it, it really shocked me that it did work. So, here we go. That was the mayor's okay suggestion. Yeah, I, I was all hurt about it, against it and everything else and thinking this is stupid and everything else, but it, I saw results from my own eyes.
Huge deal.
And as far as.
But actually you could thank my new store neighbor.
No, no, we're not gonna do that. No, no, we're not gonna do that.
We're, we're getting along a lot better than that.
Are you?
Yeah.
I give my numbers for the month, I think I should be in the reporters somewhere, what production it was. We, uh, we did a lot of productions last month. We had several days of, uh, light hours of producing water. Had several days over four hundred fifty thousand a day. And that's pretty big for us.
Yeah, and part of that is attributed, uh, Water District Number Five because ponds are down on farms and ranches, that they're installing more cattle waters. And so they're actually, their demand has gone significantly. We've had a conversation with the water districts and Troy is concerned and that's why we're, we're keeping an eye on it. And one of the things that would help improve the quality of water coming out of the lake is to make the lake deeper. So we've looked at a couple different ideas in order to do that. And one thought is since the lake is down as hard as it is, to continue to pump the water out of the lake and then, and let's see if we can get some dozers or some other excavators in there to actually dig it deeper while Mother Nature is kind of taking it that way anyway.
Now, one factor to consider with that, if we pump out of the lake, we have to do it with a mechanical pump and pump it to the reservoir, cannot bring it to the water pump. So it would have to go to the reservoir.
So that's what it does anyways, right? Would pump from the lower up to the newer?
Yeah, I, I can pull strictly out of the lake into the water plant.
We, we have to take our pump that's basically powered by a, is it a three fifty? Three fifty? And, um, and pump it out that way, yeah. There, there'd be some expense to it, but in the long run, it would improve the quality.
And capacity.
Yes, yes.
Is there any concern with, uh, with the wildlife? Do we need to like let the conservation department help us with any of it? I know, but.
I say, I say we, we could do that and let everybody come out there and just run out there and pick up what you want.
Well, if that, if we're gonna do that, then we probably definitely need to get the conservation department involved. I'm just saying it, it, it's my, look.
Wet blanket, Jeremy.
I'm just saying that there's, there is a lot of wildlife in that lake and it's something we might consider. I'm not saying don't do it, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying there might be a way to do it that would be better for the wildlife and the ecosystem.
I'm also looking at conservation grants to see if there's something that could help with funding of, of that type of a project.
Put it in a big tank and then run them up to the other reservoir and dump them in that one.
It's good to me.
That way we get to keep.
If we're gonna drain it, I'm gonna, I need to go start setting trot lines.
I was just worried about the rain first, cause that was.
All right.
Anybody got anything?
We do what we can do.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom. All right. David, you got anything to say?
We had a really good car sport meeting this month. A lot of things came out, we went through the prioritations of all the different wants and needs. Next meeting will be November second, so I encourage everybody to show up, cause probably be some people that come back with some ideas on where we wanna move these things. Priority, we talked about a gun range, we, Ryan's got a lot of things that are going on, that he's talking to other people about. I think people in the community need to get involved in all this and understand before we do it and it happens and then they're mad. I just want everybody to understand that the dog kennel was an issue this week, I think we settled that issue. But more people get involved, it'll, it'll save meetings like we had of after the fact.
So David, on you, on here, the higher the number, the higher the priority?
The other way around.
The other way around, okay, that makes more sense to me.
Yeah. So, and, and everybody's wearing these, next month they're gonna come back with more thoughts on, I hope they look at it and say, hey, we kinda were different on that, cause that was just kind of a, this is about the third round, third go-around on this, so we need to really do things now.
On the far right corner is where you're ranked at.
Yeah.
What it's ranked.
Yeah.
The lower the number, the higher the.
So your one, two, and three's, you think will be taken care of?
Well.
Or you have more to discuss?
Like, like on the baseball drainage field, that has to happen before anything else can happen. It's really not something we really care to do, but we have to do, so that's why they, they gotta come back and understand that these follow in line with each other and that has to happen first, you can't go to. Can't go to C before you get A done, and that was kind of what the meeting kinda went at, so everybody understands it, just cause it's ranked differently doesn't mean that that's our priority.
I mean, you're more excited about that, it just has to happen.
Yeah, and, and it's coming together, I mean, I really think the group is coming together, so.
You know, when we first started, you know, it was not, eight or nine people that were, that were there with all the different ideas and it, and so it was kind of a scattered view. Now, they're really starting to come together as a board and they're starting to think more of, okay, how does the, improve the park and, you know, if we do this, you know, what are the results? And, and before, you know, uh, you know, initially it was, hey, let's, you know, give revenue away, now it's, okay, well, how do we generate revenue so that we have extra money to be able to do extra projects? And so they're really, like I said, they're really coming together as a board and focusing on just different ways to, to improve. And so it's, it's, it's been, um, it's been a pleasure to be a part of it and to watch it, they're really growing together as a board.
It definitely has because the, the money you throw at it, okay, you can build anything out there, but if it costs you twenty-five thousand dollars a year to maintain it, what good is it? I mean, they're understanding the whole concept and, and steps that have to happen, so yeah, it's working out. Like I say, November second's next meeting, I encourage everybody and, you know, public and for you all to come and sit in meetings.
Can I ask you what, I'm only asking because it's one of the higher ranked ones, what green space, what does that mean or what is that?
So, basically they just, they, they like the, the openness and the, um, you know, being able to look and see grass and just, just being a part of nature, they read spaces.
Essentially what it is now, is mostly green space.
Yes.
So they're saying they wanna keep it that way.
They don't have to build on every area.
Matt, my take was that's on the wants list, not on the needs list. So there's, the first page was the needs, it's titled.
Oh, I didn't even notice.
That's the second one, so I guess it's those were the secondary priorities after the first page got achieved, is that, is that the way you guys are looking at it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the, the way the process kind of unfolded, uh, we started with the whiteboard and I said, okay, what would you like to see out in the park? I said, we don't want to, we don't wanna limit what you wanna see, this is, this is idea generation, so we just started writing everything down. All the ideas that they came up with, nothing was not put up there. Then, after everybody was kind of done with the idea generation, then I said, okay, let's categorize these, which ones are, are definitely wants that, that are once, ones that are wants that if we had the money, we could do it. Versus what do we absolutely need to do, and that's kinda how we broke them apart. And then, after we broke them apart, I said, okay, now let's prioritize on the, the needs list and then the wants list. And there's a couple of things that weren't prioritized highly, but for legal reasons, they're gonna be a lot higher than how they got ranked, just because we need to do them. Uh, because they weren't thinking of that in that context when we did it. For example, improving the, or putting the sidewalk in and the, uh, concrete pads for, um, the, uh, handicap. That, that's, that naturally is a, a, a priority, but they weren't thinking of it from that perspective, uh, and so we went through that process and I let it go down.
Okay, thanks. Alright, Mrs. Tetchone's not here, has she sent anything?
She did not, she, she, uh, I, I submitted the agenda and the packet to her, she said everything looks, looked good, looked like we were, uh, in state within the legal confines.
Anything from you, Jeremy, does that need to be?
No, but now that we know about the seven hundred thousand extra dollars, we might be needing some.
Alright, item number seven, consent agenda.
That was a surprise.
Take a motion and we pass the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, no unfinished business, let's take five minutes, we'll come back and we'll start item number nine. Moving on.
Get my calendar somewhere else, man.
New business.
So our, uh, water and sewer, um, raids ordinance, so. Our ordinance laid out a procedure for, uh, the water billing, um, when things were due, when things could be turned off, that whole process. There was a slight disconnect between, um, what the ordinance stated and the procedure that has been in place for, for some time, so. This kind of harmonizes, uh, the procedure with the ordinance, um, and with just, uh, general billing practices from water systems. So you can see the, the change, um. The old, the, the original ordinance said twenty days from the date the billing is made is when it becomes delinquent. Some, sometime in the past, the city had changed it to fifteen days, uh, but never amended the ordinance. And so we're amending the ordinance to make it to our, uh, so the billing, um, the bills are due when they're sent out, so typically it's either the end of the month or the first. And so by the fifteenth, then they would become delinquent.
That's right there, top two, second.
Well, there's, there's a lot of different sections, it's actually, um, I forget what article that's from, um. Article five.
Okay, so we're just looking at, alright, I see it there, I see it, nine twenty-two article.
Yeah, so we're not amending, we're not amending the, the entire ordinance, just, just the ones that.
Need to be updated.
Absolutely. Um, and then with the penalty, the penalty applied to the bill, um, and then, uh, the, the delinquent bill is not paid before the disconnect date. Water service to such premises shall be discontinued until the bill's paid and, um, and full disconnections will occur on the last business day of the month. And so what we were having, we were having, uh, people who were paying their bills late or that were having their service disconnect come in, pay it in the next month. But then think that they were paid for the current as well, so it was creating some confusion. Because they were paying a bill in the, the subsequent month that was due in the previous month. And so what this does is basically the bill and the shut off, uh, if you don't pay your bill, all occurs within the same month. That's pretty, that's pretty uniform within the industry. I actually brought my water bill in, uh, so I, I've had, um, ACH deductions from my water bill. My credit card, um, got hacked, so the bank sent me a new one, I forgot that, uh, my water bill was attached to that credit card, so I got a late notice. And so, hey, you know, it, it happens to everyone, but if you look at the late notice. Hey, it, it, it does, and so, um, you can see that even, even in Rainwater, um, the due date, uh, within the next ten days, you get your late notice. And then you've got another ten days to get it paid before they shut you off.
It's a better hire, good help.
It all, it all occurs, uh, in, in one month, uh, that's, that's pretty standard, um, Belt and Rainwater, Harrison, Bill Peculier, everybody, uh, that's a, a uniform practice. So this just brings us, um, in, into that, that same status.
I wouldn't worry about it, I think your wife's made.
Yeah, but when it gets turned off, she gets kind of angry.
So Ryan, I guess my only question is, so the first, there's a couple of different ordinances, there's ordinance nine twenty-two?
Correct.
And then a few pages later, there's ordinance ten eighty-nine?
That is correct.
Okay. And we just have to get those consistent?
Yes, and so, uh, because they both dealt with, uh, payments, this harmonizes both of those ordinances, uh, with the same language, and so it's, it's consistent throughout. And again, uh, like Tom mentioned, um, we had eighty-plus, um, uh, delinquent notices or shut off notices that went out. Uh, and we only added seven, I believe, or turnoffs or shut offs, when normally it ranges between, you know, twelve to twenty, um, so it was a successful, a successful order.
Thanks, guys.
So just, so I, I think I understand, but just, so this ordinance will amend those two ordinances?
Correct.
And those ordinances will still stand?
Yes.
And this one will too, because it amended them?
Yes, exactly. Now, we are getting closer to having our, um, all of our ordinances codified, and so once that happens, then, then ordinances kind of go away as they stand. And then we just use an ordinance to change our code and then it, it makes it a, the, the process very, uh, very simple and then easy to install.
So what actually needs to be taken now?
We just need to, uh, go through the process of adopting this ordinance, so it'll be a two read.
Do we have a bill number and an ordinance summary for this one?
I apologize, it, um, Yvonne, you know, those numbers are.
Twenty-three, twenty-one is the bill number, eleven seventy-one is the ordinance.
Twenty-three, twenty-one and eleven seventy-one.
So remember, whoever does this, all you gotta do is read the title of ordinance, the title, and then the second will be to read the, the actual top paragraph. Okay?
I'm really tempted to just go and read the whole thing.
You can.
You know, in, in, in other municipalities, if you do an emergency read, which is, which is, you, you, you read, um, basically you adopt it the first time, cause, uh, most, uh, your bigger municipalities have. Two meetings a month, so they'll do a, you know, a first read and then a second read. They actually have to read the entire bill for an emergency, every word of it. Fortunately, we did not have to do that.
Alright, who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept bill number twenty-three, twenty-one, ordinance number eleven seventy-one, by Tyone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion that we, the second read of adoption of twenty-three, twenty-one, ordinance number eleven seventy-one. An ordinance to amend ordinance nine twenty-two are five, section one and two, and ordinance ten eighty-nine, section seven. For the purpose of updating billing and payment requirements for the City of Adrian Municipal Water and Sewer System.
Second.
Jeff Beck?
Yes.
Yes. Hummel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. So our, our next, uh, item for discussion, um, is the animal control, um, problem. And so. We, we did have a very productive, uh, conversation with, um, the park board, but there is still some, some, uh, issues with the, the site location here in the corner. Now, as I explained to the, the park board, there were several reasons for selecting this site, you know, part of it was just the way that the land, the land, um, lies. For, for septic drainage, um, this location, uh, was better. The most important thing was, and I don't know if you guys have seen the tennis courts, but our pickleball net has been destroyed. Um, you know, in the past, we've had people put tires in, um, porta potties, fill them with, I mean, we've had some destruction out of the park. Uh, we found, uh, people have found hypodermic needles, um, you know, there's just, we, we have some issues with security. And so one of the things that this location would provide, uh, we've, we've. We've installed high-speed internet at both the water plant and Public Works. Well, because it's in a clear line of sight, we can actually extend that internet service to the dog kennel, which then will allow us to put cameras in it. And to be able to have a, a, a clear sight in the park all the way around. And so it would help improve the security, which is one of the, the, uh, benefits of having it at this location. Now, it has created some issues with the Little League football, um, largely because, and as far as what I think, is that they believe that they owned all that land. I'm not sure exactly what happened in the past, but from what I understand, sometime the saddle club that was there, they signed a document saying that Little League could have the property. The challenge is, is that I've never seen any legal document, um, that actually conveyed the property to anyone, to either the saddle club, uh, Little League football. So what I think probably occurred, and again, this is just a, a supposition, is that they had a, a lease or an agreement, the saddle club did at one point. And when they folded, I think they tried to give it to, to the Little League, um, football, which you can't, you can't sublet, uh, that kind of a situation. So when, when the saddle club folded, uh, that would have, uh, ended the lease, um, and again, I don't even know if that, that's what happened.
Cause nobody can produce any paperwork.
There's no documents, but, uh, you know, I've asked, no one can find any documents, and so, as you can see, I mean, if you pull, if we pull back. It all says the City of Adrian, so all, all of this, all the way around is all, is all city property. Now, we know that, um, you know, the antique tractor club, they have a long-term lease with the city, um, same way with the, the gun club, you know, in the south, there's a long-term lease there. And so we know that, that their use of it has been conveyed, uh, through illegal means. So like I said, I think that's part of the issue, um, we were taking this, the southernmost corner, which, um, again, you can see just by the tight confine between, um, the, the fence. You know, the, the bollards with the steel, um, rope going through it, it wasn't a highly utilized area. However, seeing as that, how many of us have received phone calls, we do have an, an alternative if we wanna proceed that way. Yvonne actually pointed this out to us, um, today. The city does own this property, um, it's just, it's south of the LP Mart, uh, north of, um, Tim Watts RV Park. This corner right here, we could actually clear out and put the dog kennel there, um, if that's what we wanted to do. It, it doesn't provide the security, um, in the park through, you know, to be able to have video, uh, or cameras out there. But it is an alternative that, um, would not be as, uh, upsetting to, to other people, so.
May I speak, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
If, if we go with this alternative spot, we can still later on put in a bathroom or something to that effect. Where the, the spot was designated for the kennel, and I don't think there'd be any objection from anybody about an addition to a bathroom. And then that way we can either add on to that bathroom or whatever and put our equipment in there if we need to.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's a good decision for us to consider that, it's just been a divisive issue. Are we also considering it there for recyclables? Well, and that's, that's another thing we've talked about, so one of the things that, that is occurring, uh, that, that staff does not like is that people are driving down here to access the RV parks, or they are pulling trailers. And so we have our oil, uh, tanks here, we also have a lift station right here. So if we chose this location, um, I would, uh, recommend that we actually put a fence across the lower boundary and we could put our recycling trailers in here. You know, cars driving in there aren't gonna hit those things, it's when people pull trailers in there, especially some of those long trailers, some of the fifth wheels, that that becomes a possibility. So if we were, we could put the recycling along that, that fence line, have the, uh, the kennel over here, um, and again, it's.
And we have water and we have sewer there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So when we put up cameras also there?
Yes, yeah, yes.
I mean, fidelity's over there, so.
So are Tim's customers doing that because they have to or just it's convenience thing? I, I think it's a convenience thing, he actually has a sign that directs traffic down that road that. That tends promoting folks to drive through, I believe so, yes.
It's easier than back there.
I, uh.
Well, that's not, that, that never was a through street anyways.
Correct, correct.
So.
The old, the old lagoon was down there.
The old lagoon was down there.
And, I mean, and he has access to his, um, right here.
Yeah, old seventy-one.
Which is actually closer to all the, all the lots, but, yes.
How, how much work has already been done at the area out of the park?
We've, we've basically put the pad in, um, so.
Gravel pad?
Yeah, gravel pad, so it's not, not, uh, not permanent.
Like none of the septic or anything?
Well, we, we did put the septic tank in, but, um, as the mayor mentioned, if we, part of the reason why we selected the land and, and the location. Was because the park does need another bathroom, and so we put the septic, uh, tank in with the thought that not only would it serve the dog kennel. But it would also serve another restroom, uh, to be built in a later time, so it was kind of a, we were looking ahead when, when we put it in. So we would not have to move it, it would actually be there, because this corner would be a good location for a restroom, it would service the, the shelters as well as the, the football. Absolutely, yep.
I, so I, I, part of this is just because I didn't pay enough attention, but, in my mind originally, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but in my mind originally, we talked about putting the dog kennel inside the property of the public works.
That is correct.
And I never was a fan of moving it outside the fence and closer to the park. So, I think that this alternative is a fantastic alternative for both the dog kennel and the recycling, cause I don't like the idea of putting recycling things out by the water tower either, out by a crystalline, or so. I think, that's, I think this is a great alternative, and kinda kills multiple birds with, with one stone, and, I mean, we've already put the septic there, so that kinda gets us rolling on the bathrooms, which is a high priority of the park and needs to be done, and just, yeah.
Hey, Yvonne, thanks for pointing that.
Yeah, I had no idea we still owned that little piece there.
And I think either way, we should probably put a gate up, no matter what, no matter what happens, we should probably put a gate up there, but that's just my opinion.
Now, do we need a motion?
So, we actually don't need a motion. Um, the bill that's in front of you, uh, was basically just designating that area, um, as, as the location of it, and so, um, if, if no one, I mean, you can make a motion and then let it die for lack of a second, or you can, um, actually make a motion to just remove it from the agenda. And, and going forward, uh, with this, we can just go ahead, and you've already approved to have, um, the dog kennel. Um, I also called, uh, the company that was to deliver it and pushed our delivery location, or our delivery, uh, timeframe back a month, right? And so, they were, that's their non-issue.
Now, I would like to see us move with moving both the kennel and the recycling to that location.
So, I have a, a technical question about this ordinance, since, since this ordinance is already written and already assigned numbers, do we, do we need to make a motion to strike it, or is it, but we never voted it into?
Alright.
We just-
So, like, there's a couple of different, you could either vote to have it removed, uh, to table it indefinitely, uh, or someone can motion it and not second it, and then it dies for lack of a second, so either way is an appropriate way to dispose of it.
And will we table it indefinitely?
Say it. On your favor?
Uh, aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen, and thank, thank you, Yvonne, for, for putting up that location, cause it, it's all, uh-
Good solution.
Call that, and just hold it up in the first place.
Well, I don't think-
Just assumed that we're asking your opinion on the, from here on in.
I, I never, I never thought that we would have such an encounter to that, but we did, so.
I got no, I honestly, no calls, and one guy said it's a good idea to put it up here.
I, I even got chewed on for it, and I had nothing to do with it.
You're welcome, Tom.
I said, go see Tom.
Go see Tom.
Go see Tom. The water guy, go talk to that guy.
Yeah, yeah, fuck the water guy, but, but okay.
Alright, moving on. Park member appointment.
So, one of the original, um, members of the park board, um, moved shortly after she was appointed, uh, and this is to appoint somebody to take her vacant position, uh, which, uh, was a three-year term. Carrie actually came to, um, to the park board meeting and saw the, um, the lively discussion that we were having about the, uh, about the, the dog kennel, and I asked her, I said, okay, are you, uh, you still wanna be a part of this and you're not scared off? She goes, oh no, she definitely wants to be there, so she's excited to join.
Yeah, um, I might be getting names mixed up here, but isn't she moving out to the country? Not that I know of, I might, I might be thinking somebody else.
Who? Can I ask?
Carrie, look, Carrie. I might, I probably think of somebody else.
That is her ex-brother-in-law.
Okay.
That's moving out here.
And selling the house, or?
Yeah, and building a new house.
I just wanna make sure, cause they have to be citizens.
No, she's fine.
Okay, cool.
Make, have a motion?
Make a motion that we appoint Carrie Lemon to fill in the remainder of the three-year term for the vacant position of the park board.
Say it. On your favor? Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm gonna have it another female version, or female vision on the park board. Not female version, female vision, uh, on the park board, it will be a, a welcomed addition.
Alright, next item?
So, the next item, uh, for discussion, um, is tiny homes. I don't know if you gentlemen are familiar with them. Basically, it's, it's homes that are, um, either constructed or, um, prefabricated, um, that are typically under a thousand, uh, square feet. Uh, they've popped up a lot in, um, in more, uh, urban areas, uh, but they are starting to gain, uh, popularity, um, especially just due to the cost of the housing. Uh, we've actually been approached by several different individuals that would like to have some tiny homes in the community. Depending on the location of them, um, there are places that it makes absolute sense. Um, you know, I would rather see tiny homes as opposed to mobile homes or, or trailer homes. If they're done correctly, and you can see a couple of the, the different planned communities, uh, that others have done, um, they can re, they can really be, uh, a welcomed addition to your community.
Can you expound upon the ideas that have been brought to you, as far as location and or-
Absolutely. So, um, there's some vacant ground that used to have trailers on, um, over here, uh, south of-
Parkview?
Park, yes.
Or Parkwood or whatever.
Parkwood, yeah. And so, that would be an ideal location for a tiny home community. You know, a tiny home next to, you know, a twenty-four-hundred square foot home, or, you know, even a fifteen-hundred square foot, doesn't make the most sense. And so, we would definitely have the planning and zoning commission go through the process of, um, basically creating a, a specific, um, part of our, our code-
Yeah.
That would allow for them, given certain criteria that are met. Uh, I just wanted to bring this to you ahead of time, because if we do change that, it will need to come back before you for, for-
So, I'm not opposed to tiny home community. Um, I, I do think it, in a real, it meets a need. There's a lot of folks that this would be a good solution, and would be a definite upgrade for their current housing situation. So, I'm not opposed to that at all. My concern is, you know, where the land that we were just discussing, will you abut it to the government subsidized housing that are right there right now, that we have real concerns about safety and security on that? Who would we attract? You know, how would that be managed? Um, so whose responsibility for security, you know, I, all of those other questions that blossom out of that? I, I'm, I like the idea, cause I really think it meets a need. I just have some logistics questions on how that would all go down.
So, I don't like the idea, and the reason is, and, is because I've worked in communities that had these as a first responder, and they end up acting just like trailer parks, uh, for lack of, I, I'm not, that's, I don't, I don't mean that as an insult to anybody who lives in a trailer park, but, I'll, as, as a first responder, uh, the call volume to a place like this is much higher than it is in the rest of the community for various reasons. And it's just the nature of having low-income housing, which I, there is a need for us to have low-income housing for people that are in our community, but I don't know that we necessarily want to attract more low-income, I don't know that we wanna put a community in and say, this is, we have a whole bunch of low-income housing here now, come to our town. Is that trying to be, I'm, I'm-
Sure, it's a, it's a balancing between, we have people that need, that are here now that need-
Yeah, exactly. And so, and I guess maybe I shouldn't say I'm against it, I'm pessimistic about it. I'm not, I'm just-
Cautious.
Yes, so-
No, those are my concerns.
Yeah.
Well, those are things that the planning and zoning commission could, could stipulize, if that's such a word.
Is now?
To, uh-
Stipulate?
Stipulate, stipulize, whatever, in their, in their, maybe bringing up a new zoning part just for this, um, that you couldn't have so many in a certain acreage, you couldn't, you know, they have to meet certain requirements as far as, such and such and such and such. So anyways, that's something of discussion. If a landowner really wants to develop some land, then we either tell him, no, can't do that, or these are the stipulations for that zone part, you, you would have to, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. So, just the thought, is there a possibility of rather than re-labeling this as a low-income community, label this as a senior adult community? And make it a fifty-five plus? And would that meet a need in our community?
And you could absolutely, you could absolutely do that, put covenant restrictions, uh, within, uh, within the property, that it could only be used for whatever purpose, that, that is a possibility.
And I only ask that because just some interactions I've had recently, people on the waiting list for quite a while, before anything opens up in, in our existing senior adult communities that we have available right now. So, Jeremy, I'm with you, I, I mean, I, I have deep, deep concerns about just attracting a segment of our society that we all care about and wanna do something good for, but is gonna have a long-term negative impact on our community. That's not, that's not where I wanna go, and is it, you know, is it an option?
I personally am more for the fact that it's less a subdivision type of thing, or a part type of thing, and more of a, can we grant a special covenant restriction to these ideas if a property owner wants to develop a tiny home?
I mean, it must've been done successfully in some places. Can we, can we look and see what they've done to, to do that successfully?
And one of the, one of the places that I would point to just within the city is, is the redevelopment of the old motel. You know, not a tiny home, but, you know, it is a-
Single-person apartments.
Yes.
Two of you, yeah.
I mean, so, this would kinda be a step up from that, um, and those, you know, I don't know how many of them are, are rented out currently. But again, I, I've had the same concerns that, that you've all shared, and that's why, I mean, we would definitely have to really restrict, you know, you don't want one going next to, you know, you don't wanna bring property values down by putting, you know, an extremely small, uh, home.
Say, after their home's torn down, they're, at Gillos Home, someone puts a tiny house there. Are, are these classified a certain way in the building code? Like, tiny homes, are they classified because they're not actually attached to the ground?
No, tiny homes are, would be attached to the ground.
I see a lot of them that are on trailers, or they're built on basically a trailer, that where they can get them to the site.
Right.
And then, most of them aren't slid over the foundation.
Well, that, that kinda step would fall under our current zoning-
Yeah, we have a, a specific code for module rooms.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, I have a, a friend of mine, when, when I was down in Springfield, he would get government grants to build these type of communities, and they were, I mean, you know, gated communities, and nice fences, you know, well-maintained, and, um, but they did cater to, you know, a fifty-five-plus crowd.
I've seen veteran communities that were-
I've seen some of these out in Colorado, and in Florida, that look like this, that are gated communities, and they're like fifty-five and over, and they're really nice, but I'm not sure that we have the market in this area to put that type of neighborhood in and expect it to be filled with retirees that are moving here to get away from the heat, uh, or, you know, going to a, a really nice, I mean, those, those are, those are places that people go because they're tourist places and they're places where people retire to. Nothing against Adrian, I don't think we're quite there yet, so, I just, that's, I just, I don't, I don't know that we have the market to, to attract that, uh, demographic in, in that amount here, so, I, I don't know. I, I'm trying to be really careful, I don't, I don't dislike anybody that would live in these, I, I want to help people in the community that need housing, but it's a complicated issue, because it could very quickly and very easily turn into another eyesore in the town, and another tax on our resources, um, you know, where our first responders are having to be there all the time, um, because of issues, and so, it's just a complicated issue. I, but, I, I, I probably said enough to offend several people by now anyway, so, I guess I'm done.
Honest answers are the best, Ken. Yeah. And Dave, to your point, yeah, that wouldn't fly.
Right, well, a house next door to me burns down, all of a sudden, they put a tiny house next to ours.
No. Yeah. We're not gonna change-
I said that.
Thousand square foot is the minimum.
Well, they could just make it right to a thousand square feet, you know?
Well, that's, they can do that, and they can do that.
Yeah, I mean, most of these models are four to six hundred square feet, they're, they're pretty tiny.
You know, I have, my children, they're all in their twenties, uh, mid-twenties, um, and, right now, they're having a difficult time finding affordable, um, living, um, you know, apartments, um, you know, they go fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars, uh, a month for, you know, one or two million. And so, I mean, to your point, I, I thought about that, but then I also thought about, you know, young couples trying to get started, you know, is, is starter homes, you know, things, things of that nature. Uh, and that, and that was kinda the element that, you know, I would hope would gravitate toward Adrian, you know, that, you know, they, they do need someplace to live, and, but again, I mean, there, there's, you can't, you can't control that.
Well, and to that point, right, I mean, if we're ever able to move forward with an industrial park, and we're providing a hundred jobs, where are those people gonna live? And if they can't live somewhere around here, companies are gonna maybe go somewhere else, because we just don't have adequate housing available, or, or what?
I'm okay with that. Alright, that's-
The idea.
I, 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 I don't, listen, I'm, I'm just, I don't see the need for our town to continue to grow and attract more people. We don't, I don't, we don't, I don't wanna be Raymore, I don't wanna be Belton. So, that, that's, that's where I'm at on that, like, as far as bringing industry in here and a whole bunch more jobs, and growing, 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 and our school district ends up being a three-A, four-A school, I don't want any of that. And I'm, I'm, I'll be very clear about that.
So, Jimmy, I don't, I, yeah, let's have that discussion, because that's not my vision either. My vision is, who are we replacing? And what, where my heart hurts is where my kids, who are now in their twenties and thirties, where do they wanna live? Do they want to stay here, or do they wanna leave to go somewhere else? I want there to be enough of Adrian here that they would wanna stay, and as our senior adult, you know, great people who have loved our community for their entire lives, as we lose them, who, who are we gonna backfill those folks with? So, and I'm thinking about, okay, what can we create so that our high schoolers don't leave? If we can get, you know, just, you know, a nice bank of job availability, where we're keeping the ones we wanna keep that matters, whoresheartedly, and, you know, rather than they feel like they, they gotta go to Kansas City or, or somewhere, just for job opportunities.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that perspective.
Well, it's, it, it makes sense, because if you, if you continue to grow in the natural sense by having children, and they grow up here, they wanna stay here, you either have, you either have apartments available for them that are hard to get into because of the line that allows, or the high cost of property values right now, because of inflation, so, there's, that's a balancing act, you know, that, I think the planning and zoning commission could probably come up with nothing, nothing, nothing overnight. It, it'll take a while to figure out all, what would, what would fit, you know, for us as a small community.
And find out how it's worked other places.
Yeah, and I don't have a, you know, I still don't mind bringing in some industrial or extra business. Doesn't mean that they have to live here. They can still drive in, like Adrianites have been driving up north for a hundred years now, so. You know, there's that possible. I think if there's jobs available, people will come, whether they commute or whether they try to find a place to live. But I, I like that, you know, if there's young people that are growing up here and wanna stay here and commute to Kansas City for their work, but they still wanna stay here, but they need affordable housing to do it.
That makes sense.
Hold on, Tom.
Uh, I think, and ask Yvonne, but I think you have an ordinance that you can't build anything less than a thousand square feet.
Right.
So that all has to be inconsiderate in.
This would be a different zoning thing that they would have to apply for, right?
And the concern I would have with if you had a community like that is make it to where it's not renting houses. Cause it seems like when you have low-income renting houses is a problem people like that. If somebody invests their money into buying a house, they're gonna take care of things a little bit better. And I can foresee going in there and some of our, our rental guys that we have in town are buying four or five of these and renting them.
Yeah.
So they would have to look into that too.
Right.
Would, I think if they bought them, purchased them in a nice community, make it where it's owned, they have to put it, make it look like a park-like setting, they have to do. Then people would have more care and more consideration on how they live.
Almost like an HOA.
There you go. I mean.
Yeah, and I would, I would venture to say that all the ones that I've dealt with are probably rental properties.
So if you put some stipulations in there like that, I think it would work, and I'm, I'm okay with it. But like you say, it cannot be like Parkwood and it's low-income renting houses, cause that's when, and I like say, I'm offending people too, but it's when you have that, I don't care, it's not mine, I'm gonna trash it, I don't care what I do. If they, if they invest their hard-earned dollars into a, a structure, it seems like they're gonna try to take over that.
More government subsidized housing is not the answer.
Yeah, no.
I'm sorry.
Daniel? I just had a comment to go along with what you were saying. Like you were talking about like people, like bringing in seniors like from other places of the state or wherever to come into town. I'm thinking like the people that we already have here. Like I know like a lady specifically, like her husband passed away, her kids are gone, her grandkids all live close enough, so they're not spending the night at her house. She has this big house that she doesn't use. She would like to sell it and move, but there's really nowhere.
For her.
She could sell her house for three hundred thousand, but she can't buy anything for less than three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So she would just be moving to a different big house. So I think something like that, like she could sell her house, move to a smaller place, have some extra money. So I'm thinking like, people that are already in our town would take advantage of that. And then that frees up, she could sell her house to your kids.
That makes sense. I, and I had not thought of it from that perspective at all, so. I've, I've never lived in a community my entire life, so I don't know, I can't relate to that. So, thank you.
Well, it is a very, it could be a very divisive topic. But given the current economy that we're in, it's, it's definitely an, an option that is available that can solve some issues if it's done right.
The discussions that you've had about this so far, have they said anything about it being a, a buy and sell type of situation or a rent situation?
We haven't had that conversation. The one that, that wants to, you know, i- if they can acquire property, you know, they wanna have sidewalks throughout the whole, I mean, they're thinking of more of a planned living community.
Yeah.
And so I would assume that it would be owner-occupied, but again, we, we haven't had those conversations.
Okay.
The other place, you know, where, you know, I can kinda see it making sense, you know, we do have another trailer court on, is it, is it Virginia?
Yeah.
Um, to where, you know, now that predates our current zone. Cause current, our current zoning would not allow that.
Right.
But, you know, replacing trailers there with a little addition like this, you know, would bring, it would change the aesthetics, you know, especially, you know, in that area.
It'd be almost like a condominium type of situation. Where you buy the living space, but you don't actually own the property itself, maybe.
It could be a lot of different.
Whatever, I'm just, I'm just throwing ideas out there. Alright. While we're talking about this, I know I didn't put this on the agenda, but I did want to ask the board, would they, would you guys be interested in having discussions with Deer Creek? HOA about coming in to the city limits, if they're interested in it?
Absolutely.
Would you agree to discussions to that?
Yeah. Make sure you get the water right.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's other issues involved, but would you entertain that discussion?
Just incorporate them?
Yeah.
I mean, they're, like you said, there's District Five involved with that and.
They ain't gonna give them up easy.
So, but.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Anything else? Anybody got anything to say?
Uh, I just wanted to say, oh, you're talking in public.
No, sorry.
Uh, I wanted to say, uh, I got, I was at the rodeo and had several people have come to me and talked about what a success they felt like it was. So specifically, the sheriff came, came up to me that night and wanted to thank all of the board members, Ryan and the whole city staff for their hospitality and for their help with setting the rodeo up. And it was a huge success of beyond, I think, anybody's imagination.
Huge.
I know, yeah, for, and for all involved, the Optimus Club benefited from it.
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty pounds of potatoes of Suzie's. Yeah. Yes.
It ran out.
Yeah, so anyway, I just wanna say thank you to the city staff particularly for working so hard to make sure that that went over well and for all the help. Obviously, thank you to the sheriff's department for doing it, and hopefully we can do it even better next year.
Yeah, I heard there were, the estimate was still maybe two thousand people that were there.
They didn't trash our park, they didn't trash the grass, they, everything. Now, there's a couple of trailers that got cleaned out in the ground, that happens. But, you know, other than that, they didn't trash the place.
Yeah.
Everything was intact.
It's fertilizer.
Yeah, I know, that's what they spread out.
The Optimus Club sold six hundred and fifty hamburgers, I think I heard. So there was, so I don't think two thousand is an underestimate at all. I think it was.
It loaded two kegs and what'd he take, twenty, twenty, thirty packs, something like that?
Yeah, and they ran out of.
Cause they poured it too.
Yeah.
It was a good night.
Yeah, it was.
It was, it was a night that everybody enjoyed.
Damn, we're out of town.
I've never seen so many kids in Monterey at one time for that damn seat.
Yeah.
Well, and it gives credence to also our park development. You know, if we keep on having success like this, no matter who's putting it on, you know, the more we can develop our park to accommodate things like that and make it easier.
There's a lot of good things going on in the city, yes.
I tell you, everybody really appreciated that there was no costs. Free to get in, this weekend, Harrison Mills, and they're gonna have maybe a thousand people at ten dollars for adults, five dollars for kids. You know, and we're, we're half the square third of that size community.
Cause we could have taken that.
Oh, we could've taken, yeah. And you may have, you know, some people may not have come because of the gate, but what a great thing you can offer your community to come in, free night. There's a lot of families to help you out, I mean, inflation's been killing people and such. Here's the thing also, if you look at the contestants, they had rants what they call Slack, which is the after-oat till midnight. They had people come from everywhere just to compete. Not only just to watch it, but they brought in people from everywhere just to compete.
Yeah.
So there, there's your statement right there.
Kudos to the sheriff's support.
The spot contractor said there was more contestants than any rodeo he'd ever done. There's more contestants.
They actually had to turn away kids for the mutton busting. They had to cap it, and they said they, we, we can't allow one extra, cause otherwise, if there were forty or fifty, that, that would've, I mean, it, it could've gone on. Yeah, it was, it was a great, great event.
Yeah, right, so, good job, everybody.
Do we need to go into closed?
We do not have a reasonable exit section.
When I make a motion, then we wrap things up, guys?
All second? All in favor of a German?
Alright.